The mayor has determined that the August 2, 2021 city council meeting will be the last public meeting conducted by the city under the emergency procedures provided in section 7E of the Open Meetings Act by ILCS 120 slash 7E until further notice. The City of Elmhurst has been conducting public meetings electronically during this emergency period for the protection of the public and compliance with emergency restrictions. I think that's all we... The City of Elmhurst has arranged that public comment be a teleconference. The city clerk will deliver the list of those speakers signed up to speak to the mayor before the beginning of the meeting. Speakers will be called upon in order. The requests are received by the clerk. Public comment is limited to three minutes. And I think that's what we need to read. Okay. With that, I will ask Clerk Tamer to please call the roll.
Dunn?
Here.
Hill?
City of Elmhurst.
He's on here. Is he online?
Alderman Hill, are you on the line? Phone? No.
Absent. Palmsky?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Toledo?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Hanquist?
Here.
Bastido?
Here.
Mulliner?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Veremis?
Here.
Deuter?
Here.
Twelve, uh, twelve present, one absent, one vacancy.
All right. Twelve present, one absent, one vacant. We have a quorum. Onto announcements. I'll speak a little bit more under the ma... about it under the mayor's report, but as you see, we are requiring face masking in City Hall, including during these meetings. If you are speaking, please feel free to remove your mask, and that goes for public comment. If you go to the microphone and you are speaking to us, please feel free to remove your mask. With that, I'll ask Clerk Tamer, do we have any written communications that you have received?
No, mayor, there's none.
All right. And is there anyone in the audience that has a written communication that they would like to deliver to the city council? All right. There being none, we will move on to item four on the agenda, public forum. This is an opportunity for anyone of the public to address the city council on a matter of their choosing. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes out of respect for the work the council needs to get done and others who may want to speak. I will give you a reminder if we get close to three minutes to wrap it up. When you approach the microphone, please state your name. Address is optional, but helps us get in touch with you if there's something we might want to follow up with you. That being said, Clerk Tamer, is anyone signed in for public comment?
Yes, mayor. We first have Ruth Maple.
Maple was bright hint early at seven o'clock. Thank you for waiting.
Yes, and I'm an Elmhurst resident at 331 North Elm in Elmhurst. Got to remember to put my cheaters on. Anyway, my topic is on the streetscaping for the North York Corridor, the TIF district, as suggested in a letter by the Alderman, Palmsky, Dunn, Jensen, and Hill. I'm in total agreement with the streetscape plan as suggested for the TIF area. Some say this area has been the forgotten stepchild, and I would be in agreement with that. Tonight's positive vote by the city council would send this to the Public Works and Safety Committee, and I would also suggest additional funding for this consideration for traffic control signals for city streets adjacent to the fire station at both intersections north and south of that site at Fremont and York. The rationale for that would be the traffic coming onto York from the north side of Free... the fire station on Fremont doesn't have any knowledge of the traffic control signal, what's happening with that. And sometimes I've seen almost accidents happen, people turning right onto York to go south on York and not even knowing that the fire or the ambulance is coming out of there until they're halfway there and they're startled and they slam on their brakes. Also, when they see traffic, if they are turning left, they see traffic stop there, they don't know that the fire truck is going out either way. Anyway, the traffic coming onto York from the east side of Fremont doesn't have a clear vision of the northbound York traffic due to overgrown bushes at times. Traffic on north... on York take the 35 mile an hour speed limit as a mere suggestion. And pedestrians who would want to cross York Road have to... to get to the shopping area must also cross Fremont at their own risk. I would suggest to move those traffic signals as quickly as possible to make it a safer area, and this is an appropriate place for any pedestrians across the street. It would lay traffic onto York, and I have some more suggestions and possibilities regarding this intersection, but these are the most imperative. My thoughts and suggestions are to make Elmhurst a better and safer area for those here and for those residents yet to settle here. Elmhurst is a great town, and that's why I've stayed since 1980, raised my family, and I want to stay as long as I possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maple. Clerk Tamer?
Next is Claude Pagash.
Mr. Pagash.
Mayor, I'd like to apologize even to the aldermen for what I did last meeting. It's regrettable that I did it, but I'd like to continue what I really wanted to say. There was a debate about a railroad station. It served its purpose. It's not quite large enough today. I spent a good portion of my life putting up structures, warehouses, hospital additions, schools. Each one has certain requirements. The station you have today basically fits them all. The trouble is, the number of people using the station has increased. Its capacity is overwhelmed. I can appreciate a new station. I really can. Some of the materials suggested are fine, but you have people in that station for a short period every morning. It doesn't last all day. You have a short period of time in the evening when you have masses of people there. They want to get home. They don't want to hang around the station. So many suggestions. Of what value are they? I used to call it puff when we put up structures, and there was some wish of somebody that got it through. Basic structure you have is fine. It's ideal. The guy that designed it years ago didn't miss a thing. He just didn't realize capacity. So so many ideas of glass windows and fancy materials. What you want is you want a structure that's going to handle a group of people that doesn't get damaged, can be cleaned up readily so it can be... prepare it for the evening. You don't need a lot of fancy things. You want it to function and serve that purpose, and that's what I found in all the buildings I ever built. If I built a warehouse, the guy didn't want fountains in the middle of it. If I built a school, they wanted it to function, and that... all of these buildings have certain restrictions on them put on by other agencies other than the city. So I don't know what's eventually going to develop out of this, but so many ideas have no bearing on function. The old station had a little coffee shop in a corner. I don't even know if it's there anymore. It served its purpose. Today, the volume of people, it can't sustain, so you're going to build a bigger station. Fine. Fill it out of materials.
You're a little over your three minutes. Would you please wrap up as you can?
But don't go to anything fancy. All that'll be done is wrecked, and it's harder to keep clean. So wherever's got to decide, let's make it simple and functional for short periods of time.
Thank you, Mr. Pagash.
That's it, mayor.
All right. Thank you. That's the end of the persons who have signed in. Is there anyone in the audience who... present today who would like to make public comment but did not have the opportunity to sign the list? There being none, is there anyone on the phone line who would like to make public comment? If so, please state your name. There being none, we will close public forum. Thank you. Item five, consent agenda. Need a glass of water, Clerk Tamer? Are you ready?
I'm okay.
All right. Thank you.
Five point one minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on July 19th, 2021. Five point two, accounts payable, July 29, 2021. Total $904,888.17. Five point three, appointment of E&amp;U to the Senior Citizen Commission. Five point four, appointment of Jason Piat to the Public Arts Commission to fulfill an unexpired term of Vail Stewart. Five point five, appointment of Karen Lee to the Public Arts Commission. Five point six, referral traffic study for Madison Street, Euclid and surrounding area. Alderman Michael Hanquist and Emily Bastido. Five point seven, referral North York Corridor streetscape. Alderman Danny Palmsky, Bob Dunn, Chris Johnson, and Jacob Hill. Five point eight, referral fleet passenger vehicle purchases. Alderman Brian P. Cahill, Jacob Hill, and Chris Johnson. Five point nine, referral Elmhurst Veterans Commission. Alderman Jacob Hill, Mark A. Mulliner, Jennifer Veremis. Five point 10, case 21PO9 McNally Plan Unit Development 223-231 Large. Five point 11, report case 20P10 King Transmission Conditional Use Permit for Planned Unit Development, 180 West Grand. Five point 12, Illinois American Water Wheeling Rate. Five point 13, report Flag Creek Reclamation District Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA for Water Meter Reading. Five point 14, report Elmhurst University Parade and Homecoming 2021. Five point 15, report 2021 Dan Gibbons Turkey Trot. Five point 16, an ordinance declaring surplus property and authorizing the disposal of the surplus property. Five point 17, a resolution appointing Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund authorized agent, Jim Grabowski. Five point 18, a resolution authorizing the execution of recapture agreement. Five point 19, resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code for January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2019. Five point 20, a resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code for January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020. And five point 21, resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code for January 21st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021.
Thank you. Clerk Tamer, is there any item on the consent agenda that an alderman would like to remove either to further discuss or to vote no on? Anyone on... are aldermen online? All right. There being none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Alderman Cahill, second Alderman Deuter. Clerk Tamer?
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill is absent. Palmsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, one absent, and one vacancy.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, one absent, one vacant. We have the consent agenda passes. Onto committee reports. Item 6.1, Clerk Tamer, will you read the topic?
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance Council Affairs and Administrative Services Committee that the city council approve the additional sales tax incentive for iMotorsports for an amount not to exceed $250,000 for 10 years with an amendment to the second agreement of an annual incentive payment cap of approximately $49,671 through 2028. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for city council approval. Signed, Noel P. Toledo, Vice Chair, Chris Johnson, Alderman Ward III, and Jennifer Veremis, Alderman Ward I. Unsigned, Bob Dunn, Chair.
Well, let's have a motion to put this before... Alderman Dunn with a motion, second by Alderman Jensen. Alderman Dunn?
Yes, I... I'll just throw an intro out to this particular topic. iMotorsports has been in town about seven years now. Approached us back in 2014 with a request for a sales tax incentive of $250,000. That was a successful incentive. That was... the purpose of that was to try to turn around a lot that was in somewhat disrepair and to help them start up their business. As they expand it, they can't... they had approached the city a second time for another incentive, that one totaling $500,000, and we are in the midst of that one right now. The first incentive is almost complete from a earnings standpoint and from a... the point where they're going to hit the time of the incentive. The second one is actually... will go out to 2028 before it expires. So my position on this was that we have a very good business in town and very happy to see them successful. I had some concern with a third request in such a short time that this at first appeared to be incremental growth of a business, as all businesses do. They grow, they invest in the business, and, you know, we don't... 99 times out of 100, we don't even hear from those businesses as they grow. So, you know, that's the background on the report, and I'll let my other committee members speak who actually did sign the report.
All right. I'm going to go to Vice Chair Toledo. Do you have any comments you want to make, Vice Chair?
I'm happy to speak in support of this report. Can everyone... can you hear me, Ms. Mayor?
Sorry. No joke. Yes, we can... I can hear you, but everyone else can. Sorry.
Before I launch into my comments, I wanted to make sure I was off mute. Yeah, I'm... as you, as everyone can see, we had a report supported by myself, Alderman Jensen, and Alderman Veremis. Through discussions with the committee, we agreed that the request met the sales tax incentive policy primarily for the reasons that it is an expanding business, looking to address an underserved market, namely the ATV and personal watercraft market, which is not served by a business in Elmhurst currently. It would include a facility expansion to increase their inventory and the addition of... part of the addition of that facility expansion included the building of a solar roof to not only protect the inventory but also to help charge future electric vehicles, which we believed met the quality and aesthetics being in excess of the legal requirement part of the sales tax incentive policy. The terms are beneficial for those aldermen and city council members that have gone through sales tax incentives before. Sometimes businesses do ask for upfront money in cash to help them meet a capital need. This request does not do that. It is a pay-as-you-go, so as the business increases, their sales tax receipts above the predetermined base, then they earn back their incentive. And the clawback is in place, so if this business leaves before the end of this term of this incentive, they would be required to pay back 100% of what was owed to them under this agreement. And finally, in support of this, you know, I think we all recognize that this is a successful business. I think it's important that we help expanding in successful businesses in town as well as new businesses in town. We've had a very business-friendly community for the last decade or so, and that has definitely helped Elmhurst be attractive both to other businesses and to new residents, as we've seen, which has added to the vitality of Elmhurst over time. And I think that that intangible aspect is important at any time that we consider any of these types of incentive agreements. So with that, you know, we are... we are asking, and I ask, and the other aldermen ask for your support, but I believe before we get to that, that there might be a motion contemplated here.
All right. I don't know if there... I'll just... well, thank you, Alderman Toledo. Is there anyone else who wants to address the report? Alderman Veremis, you're on there. I can't see your hand, if it's up or not. Probably not. All right.
Thank you.
No?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes. We hear you.
Okay. Thank you, mayor. I too would like to support the sales tax incentive for iMotorsports. Currently, watercraft and off-road vehicles are an underserved market in the area and would draw consumers from the region, generating additional sales tax for Elmhurst. Additionally, as industry trends move towards electric vehicles, the outdoor showroom built for these vehicles will have a solar panel roof, which will directly charge the inventory on-site. In business, you are constantly thinking ahead, and with iMotorsports adding watercraft, off-road vehicles, and a sustainable structure, I think it shows a forward-thinking, long-term investment in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Veremis. Anyone else? Alderman Brennan?
Thank you. Just a quick question for the committee. If we don't approve this, do they not move forward with their vision?
This would... they would not get the sales tax incentive if this report is not approved. Correct.
But would they move forward with the expansion of their business?
Well, that is...
I'm happy to address that, being one of the aldermen supporting the report, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Alderman Toledo.
Yeah, so, Mr. Alderman Brennan, you know, it's... it's hard to say. Certainly, the business applicant came to us with this request because they need some help. It is hard to know. This is always a poker game that the City of Elmhurst plays with any applicant, whether it's an incentive or a sales tax incentive or whatever it might be. They do still have an agreement, a couple of years left in the current agreement, so this agreement would layer on top of that, but it would extend it beyond that.
Thank you, Alderman Toledo. Follow-up, Alderman Brennan, you?
Just... yeah, no further comment. Thank you.
Alderman Dunn, did you want to add?
To further address Alderman Brennan's question, I wasn't... that was one of the concerns I had about signing the report was I wasn't convinced that this was a situation where there was a hardship, where the project would absolutely not move forward without it. This, as I mentioned before, this looks to be incremental growth of a business. They are bringing a whole new pro... two new product lines in, which is very exciting. So the... my concern was that, that they appear to... potentially would have done it without the incentive, but, you know, I wasn't certain. I know staff reviewed the financials with the sales tax policy. They're supposed to be audited. Financial reports submitted, and I know staff was supportive after reviewing those. I first thought with this request that perhaps it was okay to say no, and then I looked at the figure of $250,000 and with them requesting a solar panel feature that was costing about 250 grand. The benefit that they would accrue was about $12,000 a year in reduced electricity costs, which was about 120 grand over the 10 years. So I started looking at maybe half the 250, but, you know, in the end, I'm supporting what the committee came up with, with the $250,000. But I would like to make a motion to make a slight change to the report with the current... the second incentive set to expire in seven years, and this being 10 years, that would only give us three additional years of really locking the applicant in. So I'd like to make a motion to amend the report to move the term of the agreement, which will help the applicant as well in case they weren't able to accrue the $250,000 in the 10 years, but I'd like to extend that to 12 years, and that appears... the 10 years appears three times in the report on page three. The first bullet on the top of page three, the second bullet has the 10-year, and then at the bottom, the final recommendations. So, you know, my motion is to amend that from a 10-year term to a 12-year term.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion that has been seconded to change all the references to... from a 10-year term to a 12-year term. Discussion on the amendment. Anyone on the... any of the three aldermen on the phone who... I'm sorry. Alderman Bastido?
Alderman Dunn, do you know if the applicant is aware of the idea to change this and if they support it?
Yes, they're aware of it, and they are supportive of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Is... are there any aldermen on the phone who want to address the amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Alderman Toledo?
Yeah. I'll just say that I think it's a reasonable... a reasonable suggestion, and I support it and look forward to the support of the incentive with that change. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Toledo. Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, mayor. Just a clarifying question. By extending this term, we are not changing the amount of the incentive, and we're not really changing our ability to recapture, the pace at which we'd recapture. We're really just... Alderman Dunn mentioned that locked-in period, so the term of the agreement is extended, but the financial implications are no... are not changed for this.
That is correct. It's still $250,000. As soon as iMotorsports would earn that amount in sales tax rebates, then they are paid off. That could be in year five or six even, but, you know, we want to make sure they have the opportunity to do that, and that's why I think moving it to 12 is good. Plus, it gives us the... a five-year extension on, you know, kind of lock in the business in as opposed to just three years.
And just for clarity, when we say lock in, meaning they can't leave town within that period essentially?
Correct.
That's the extension? All right. Other discussion on the amendment. All right. Appears to be none, so I will... so what we're doing right now is voting on the amendment, only to extend the term from 10 years to 12 years, and then we will address the main motion. On the amendment, so Clerk Tamer, I ask you to call the roll for those in favor of extending the term to 12 years.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill is absent. Palmsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, one absent, and one vacancy.
All right. Twelve ayes, zero nays, one vacant, and one absent. The amendment passes, and now we're on to the main item. The amendment passes, and now we're on to the main item on the report of 6.1. Is there any further discussion on the report itself as amended? Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. iMotorsports has established itself as a thriving and continually expanding business. The company's presence in Elmhurst is good for the city, and its proposed expansion is also good for the city. When it comes to economic development, cities don't have many tools, and in Elmhurst, we have a few, and we've used them in many cases to the benefit of the city. Among the few tools we have are tax increment financing and the sales tax incentive. Because the tools exist, I don't fault any business for asking for them. It's a good business practice to seek support that improves the company's bottom line. The challenge for the city is to provide only as much support as necessary to make the development viable, and it's often very difficult to determine that amount. In the case of iMotorsports, as others have mentioned, I see a thriving business with an opportunity to grow, which is the goal of most companies, and one that most companies manage without public assistance. One unique aspect of the proposed development that we're talking about tonight is that will include the solar roof, which may be an extraordinary expense, but it's one that most directly benefits iMotorsports by lowering their operating expenses. Quite honestly, for those reasons, I would have looked for a smaller incentive amount or a cost sharing that provides more benefit to the city than the 50-50 split. But as has been mentioned, and as I said earlier in my comments, it's often very difficult to determine what that amount should be, and I'm going to, in this case, rely on the committee's analysis and their determination that the project wouldn't be viable without the support from the city. I hope that with this incentive, this, from the city and the forward-looking investment in solar, the solar roof, that iMotorsports will be well-positioned to continue to grow and generate revenue for Elmhurst well beyond the term of this agreement. So I will support the report.
Thank you, Alderman Deuter. Any other comments, discussion on the motion? Anyone on line 2 add anything, any of the Aldermen? All right. There being no further comment, Clerk Tamer called the roll, please.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill absent, Palmski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Varamis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays, one absent, one vacancy.
12 ayes, zero nays, one absent, one vacant. The report 6.1 passes, thank you. Onto item 7, reports and recommendations of appointed and elected officials. Mayor Levin. I have a couple of things I want to mention. The ongoing topic of the United States Post Office, as I reported at a previous meeting, Congressman Quigley was contacted, and he provided us with a letter that he had received from the Post Office. And the manager of postal operations contacted the city and wanted to further address it. City Manager Grabowski followed up. The gentleman in that position has been there for approximately four weeks, and there's, he's trying to bring more resources into Elmhurst, and when he spoke with City Manager Grabowski, they were down to a one-day delay. Actual results may vary, as they say in the commercials. But Congressman Quigley was out here today, and we talked about it a little further. We visited, Alderman Deuter and I were with the Congressman, we visited Greencastle and also Lexington, and there were questions from residents there, and as he described it, as a game of whack-a-mole, you move more resources here, someone else in his district finds out that they're getting delays in their mail, so it gets shifted over there, et cetera. And I won't run through all the reasons, which were detailed in the letter, but as we come off the COVID situation, we hope that it will start improving. So the idea of trying to predict which days they would be wasn't really necessary based upon the representation that we're only on a one-day delay. Part of the Congressman's visit today was not only to talk to those, the residents of those two facilities, but he met with the Public Works Director, City Manager, and I don't know what Ken Smith's title is, important person, but-
City Engineer.
City Engineer, thank you. And wanted to see the hole we have dug, and that he has been working on with us. There are, we're back to the days of earmarks in the federal government, and he proposed 15 projects in his district for earmarks, and some of them are quite large, a blue-line expansion to hair, big projects, and I was pleased and appreciative of the fact that our project was included amongst those. He seeks a variety of projects of different dollar amounts, different subject matter, different impacts, if you will. And as it stands right now, he reported that that, all 15 projects that he had were approved, passed out of the House, and goes to the unknown area of the Senate, but he feels confident that when things shake out, if things go as planned, we will be in a, in a good situation. So we're very appreciative of that. He's also helped us on the railroads, the train stations, so it was good to visit with him today. I did want to comment a little bit on our masking situation, as I announced at the beginning of the meeting. I attended a meeting teleph, let's see, no, actually, yeah, telephonically, no, in-person, I take it back, wrong meeting, with some members of the county board and some other mayors on an intergovernmental committee, and that was early Thursday evening, and everyone reported how well things were going. Two hours later, I'm getting some reports, and spent a lot of time over the weekend, because within a couple hours, the transmission level had increased from moderate to substantial risk, and it went actually from low to moderate to substantial in about four weeks. So there's a marked increase in the transmission level. The CDC issued guidance for use of masks in indoor spaces. It then was also endorsed by the State of Illinois, and our DuPage County Board of Health similarly went for the use of masks in indoor spaces. So based on that, I contacted City Manager to ask if he would be supportive of having staff using masks when in the building, other than when they're at their desks, or whatever guidelines he might use, and that's why I sent out the email to the members of the council to preview it with them, saying that while we're up here, unless you're speaking, when we're walking around in the building, we will also use masks. I'm not going to go through all the statistics, but the positivity rate on the Fourth of July was under 1%. It's now 4%, and we need to reduce that. By coincidence, had a meeting with the President of the hospital about 10 days ago, and she, when the transmission rate was much lower, and she was reporting that the facility, all the beds were taken, not in an emergency, they had plenty of room to accommodate others, but we're seeing county-wide, both ICU, intensive care unit, and non-ICU activity and hospitalizations are increasing. Since December 2020, when vaccines first became available, fully vaccinated residents account, have accounted for 1.1% of COVID patients, and 0.08% of hospitalizations, and 0.02% of deaths. So it's clear, based on the medical evidence that we're seeing across the board, that vaccinations are lessening the severity of the outcomes for those who get COVID. 80% of the DuPage population over age 12 has received one dose, and 59.25% have been fully vaccinated, so we kind of lead the state in vaccinations. We have, all of our mass vaccination sites are closed, but there are plenty of vaccines available. There's a website called vaccines.gov. I took a look at it today. It lists places nearby in DuPage County where anyone may go to obtain a vaccine, and for those who are unable to get out of their house, there are, if you go on that website, or if you can't figure it out and were to call City Hall, we could hook you up with a way to have a mobile vaccine. So DuPage County Health Department knows the vaccine boosters are not recommended at present time, but they will continue to monitor the updates as needed. The data that was reviewed by the CDC was used to demonstrate the prevalence of the Delta variant, the newest, latest, and greatest, that has a viral load of over 1,000 times greater than prior strains. And if you're not aware, there are other strains besides the original and the Delta. The Delta's the one we're concerned about. So vaccinations have been identified as offering protection from severe illness or death. The Delta variant noting has been, started in India, I guess it doesn't matter where it started, but it's now present globally. So there's caution against, unvaccinated persons may lead to newer and perhaps greater or more powerful variants. So the executive summary is, we will be, as all of the governmental agencies that I've described are requiring masks, we will for the foreseeable future. We're not going to, this is our last meeting where we will have remote participation, other than under the state guidelines that existed before COVID, meaning if you're, I think it's either you're on work or you're ill, you may phone in. Otherwise, your presence in person for all council members will be needed, required if you want to participate. We are not, and I'm not asking the council to issue any kind of ordinance to require masks in any other businesses, but I am personally pleading, requesting that businesses in Elmhurst follow that max mask mandate, and have patrons, the workers, wear their masks, and as I went around town over the weekend and today, most workers are, a lot of patrons are starting to wear the mask. Obviously, if you're sitting down and eating, you would not be wearing a mask. This is not social distancing required. We're not saying whether you have to wash your hands or not, but when you're in those public places, the retail stores, please wear a mask. Please encourage the businesses that you'll come across to, to take that up, and please encourage people to get vaccines. It's the best hope we have for not reverting back to something like we had last year, and that would be a terrible thing if that happened. Little personal commentary in there, but that's my report. Thank you, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick items. Tuesday, the neighborhood roll call will be at Utley and Berkeley, 7:00 p.m., and on Thursday, they will be held at Park and Huntington. We've had excellent turnout, so thank you for spreading the word to your constituents. It's been very helpful for our officers to see the support of the community, and I think it's important for the residents to meet the officers as well. That's it, thank you.
All right. I know that at least one Alderman wanted to also give a report on either what has already been stated by me or otherwise, so are there other Aldermen that wanted to, I think Alderman Varamis, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
You might have to speak up just a little bit, okay?
Can you hear me? Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
I want to offer my support in your decision, and I would also like to encourage business owners to re-implement a mask policy. I better than most understand how difficult COVID has been on the businesses, and something to our local patrons, please be considerate and respect the guidelines of our local establishments. One too many times, I've heard from owners who had to deal with defiant customers, and we are all doing the best we can. I was vaccinated in April and lived a very healthy, clean lifestyle, yet I am calling in tonight for a reason. Last Monday, I tested positive, and thankfully, my symptoms have been very mild. Unfortunately, COVID isn't entirely behind us, and we need to remain diligent with our safety protocols. So thank you for your support in this.
Thank you, Alderman Varamis. Anyone else with a report or a comment on the previous? All right, there being none, we will move to item 7B, other businesses. Is there any other business to be brought by the council? Alderman Dunn?
Yes, I just want to take out this time to thank our Finance Director, Tom Trozine, for his 30 years of service to Elmhurst, last five as the Finance Director. His commitment to the city, to the level of work of his department and of the city are second to none, and I do appreciate his efforts. He retired today, and he will be greatly missed, but we are looking to fulfill that void.
Thank you. Actually, I'm a little bit remiss myself. We, we were around this afternoon, there was a going-away event for staff, and we have been very fortunate to have had very few finance directors in the time that I've been involved with the city, which doesn't mean just the 11 years I've been on the council, but even before. And Tom has done a yeoman's job, and I, it's with, I think, heavy emotion that he parts from the city after 32 years of service, which is in this day and age when people kind of come and go with great frequency, that's something that we can appreciate, not only the longevity, but the quality of the service. He got his rocking chair today, so what more could you ask for in life? All right, thank you for the side reminder on that, Alderman Dunn. Any other business to be brought before the council? There being none, may I have a motion to adjourn? Alderman Brennan? Alderman Dunn seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Put it in order, you have to do a voice vote.
Do a voice vote.
You have people remote.
He wants a roll call vote, because there's people remote.
Do you have an adjourn?
Yeah, I guess.
Well, we'll do it one last time.
Now, when you have remote, you have to do a voice vote.
All right. Clerk Tamer?
Yeah, no, I need to start from somewhere else. I have the wrong adjournment. Give me one second. Okay. Dunn?
Aye.
Hill? Absent. Palmski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Varamis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Yeah, 12, sorry, 12 ayes, zero nays, one absent, one vacancy.
12 ayes, zero nays, one absent, one vacant. Where's your?